Good evening, this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for February 24th, 2015. We'll call it to order and the first item on our agenda is to confirm our future meeting dates. So we've scheduled for March 10th, which is a Tuesday night. We need to book some other Tuesday nights. What about the 24th and the 31st? The reason being, I don't think we want to meet on St. Patrick's Day night.
Good point. That's fine with me.
Both of them are Tuesday nights.
The 24th?
24th and 31st.
Should they both okay with me?
Those work.
24th and 31st?
I mean...
10th, 24th, and 31st. Why don't we plan on those dates? While we're at it, the Warrant Committee's meeting, this is a very busy month for the Warrant Committee, and they've set aside the first Monday and Wednesday of, well, the first and second Monday and Wednesday nights, so the 2nd, 4th, 9th, and 11th, for their discussion of their non-budget articles. We have some before then, we also have one with the Town Government Study Committee, so they've asked us to book the 9th and 11th, for us in the Town Government Study, to come in and join them. We have a couple of articles that may be able to be presented the 2nd or the 4th, so they've asked us to, if we're available those nights, and if we want to present any earlier, such as, Tom, the debt service article, I don't know where you're at on whether that one's ready to be presented earlier than the 9th or the 11th.
I don't think so, but if it is, I'll, well, you know.
Okay, all right, and we need, so we need to check on that, we need to check with Bob Sheffield on the home rule petition article. So those are tentative dates that they've asked us to set aside, the 2nd, 4th, 9th, and 11th. They're also meeting on the 16th, I don't know if they need us that night, but those may be joint meetings, so we'll probably go ahead and post the 9th and the 11th. And whoever, even if not all of us can be there each night, I think the 9th will be the most important one, because that's the night the Town Government Study Committee will be there to talk about the Town Administrator article. Item number three on our agenda is payroll and vendor warrants.
With approval of current payroll and vendor warrants.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizens speak. Seeing none for citizens speak, we'll move on to a public safety update. Everyone knows we're still dealing with the aftereffects of all these storms, and we're joined tonight by several of our department heads, so why don't they all come up to the table, and we'll introduce them, and they're here at the table. Thank you all for coming in tonight. Everyone's working very hard. Hopefully the microphones will be able to pick everyone up, but we're joined by, from my left to right, Bill Ritchie, our Consolidated Facilities Director, Chief Richard Wells, our Police Chief, Joe Lynch, DPW Director, and Jack Grant, our Fire Chief. So, again, thank you all and your staffs for everything that you're doing. We know that there are some things that are working well, and some other things that we need to make some improvements on. We've all heard from a lot of residents in town, and I think we're going to turn it over to the Town Administrator and the four of you to give us an update on, we were at the Town Administrator convening a meeting yesterday, and why don't you tell us about some of your revised plans?
Yes, Madam Chair, what we did yesterday was we convened a meeting of the local emergency planning group, and we met in this room, and we kind of brainstormed and had some strategic planning to, to address the public safety concerns on the streets and the sidewalks in our town. And I'm going to let the DPW Director outline the strategic plan that we put in place going forward for an indefinite period of time.
Sure. In our industry, what we do is we assess various events and incidents, and you set various levels of command, given the types of action that you need to carry out, or that you're anticipating to achieve the mission that you're trying to set forth. Set forth. That could be anywhere from a celebration to like a parade of fireworks, all the way down to, you know, a major road race, all the way down to a natural disaster, or, or worse, get a terror attack, I mean, everything in between. And in doing that, we established under this snowstorm, an incident command system where we are going to meet on a very regular basis, where you will forecast what your next 12-hour mission is going to be, what assets you need, people and equipment to carry it out. Then, as you move forward every 12 hours, look at how you did in achieving that, and you know, you don't want to set unrealistic goals, you want to set realistic goals to keep momentum and morale moving. But assess where you are, and as you forecast what the next 12 hours looks like, understand the gap that needs to be maybe caught up, or better yet, you know, if we can gain some more momentum, you know, maybe we bite off a bigger piece of the next 12-hour period. And we do that in a rowing 12-hour period, so we're always looking one full day in advance, looking back for the prior 12 hours of what we've done, looking forward in the next 12 hours, and then looking 20, you know, the 24th hour out of what the next thing is going to be. To carry that out, what we've done is we've set up two full-time, round-the-clock, 24/7 operations, not with just Public Works Department employees. We have two contractors, one is going to set up for a nighttime operation from 7:00 PM every evening to 7:00 AM every morning. We have to balance things like, you know, knowing where the morning commute is going to be, where the trash pickup might be on Wednesdays and Thursdays to avoid those areas. But what we've done is we've established what we think to be the greatest vulnerabilities, those things that we want to address, and those are, you know, in no particular order, but collectively become the mission. Sightlines as people enter those busy or high-travel, high-speed roads, so it's, you know, they're safer to do that. The narrow roads, so the fire apparatus can get in and out, though I think the fire apparatus, for the most part, is addressed. Now it's getting two-way traffic, you know, when the fire truck goes down, if they encounter a head-on car, what do they do? And then sidewalks, and then snow removal in general, in the vicinities of the major intersections in the school areas where, you know, pedestrians, you know, children, pedestrians are probably most vulnerable. Collectively, those all come together, where we would start at points of interest at each of the schools, and work all of those vulnerabilities outward from those schools. And not concentrate on one area, period, but to look in one area, radiate out, and then, you know, depending on the day of the week and the transactions and whatnot, move into another school area, radiate out, another school area, radiate it out, and every 12 hours, assess how that's happening. At the same token, it frees up, you know, so we have two contractors, one doing that every night, and one doing it every day, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The ones during the day, they obviously have to stay, more important to stay out of the commute areas in the morning, so they're going to be in local neighborhood areas, within those concentrated areas, and then as the commute goes by, get out into those busier areas before the school dismisses in the afternoon, before they get back into the neighborhoods again. So, you know, that's, that's the mission as we move forward for, you know, the next several weeks. You know, at some point in time, you know, we're going to assess it constantly, every 12 hours, but at some point in time, you know, all of us keep our fingers crossed, you know, this terribly cold weather and the new four inches of snow we might get tonight goes away, and, you know, we start getting a melt-off, and maybe our mission changes and refocuses to, you know, maybe knock in, you know, piles, these stockpiles down and spreading them out so they can melt more readily. So, you know, that's, that's where we're at. Supporting each of those nighttime and daytime operations is a certain core element, depending on what the principal mission is, that's supported by DPW forces on an overtime basis or during a straight-time basis, depending on which shift they're in. You know, whether they're working that day, regular day shift, and it's that daytime operation, you know, gets handled a certain way. Of course, the stuff that's overnight is overtime night. But it also has to be tempered with what's going on. For example, we have relatively few people, actually have one supervisor, one sidewalk plow with a snow blower, and one cleanup guy with a, with a plow on his truck, handling tonight's support, because we're anticipating that the rest of the crew will be out, you know, scraping and sanding tonight before tomorrow morning's commute. So, you know, so we're going to continue to watch the weather and adjust, and truth be told is, you know, the Public Works Department, regardless of the season and what the heck's on the ground, really has another core mission to do, and that's, you know, to sample water and provide safe and clean water, and fill potholes, and to, and to replace signs that are knocked down in vulnerable intersections. We have a regular public works mission to carry out, and, you know, I don't want to be able to detract from that during the day, yet their principal focus, even daytime, will be snow removal, but still be able to handle those core objectives as those needs arise on a, on a daily basis, be able to not simply put those aside. So, with that being said, we will meet through the incident command system, we will meet at the EOC every 12 hours.
24 hours.
24 hours, excuse me, we're meeting, we're going to assess every 12 hours, we're going to meet every 24, so we're meeting again tomorrow morning at 8:30, at which point we'll be able to, you know, revisit how we did last night, and how things are going in the morning. To that end, I'm going to have a supervisor carry in the day shift operation, I'm going to have a supervisor carry in the night supervision. My goal in the, in the shorter term will be to work a swing shift, where I would be here, you know, core hours, but be able to handle the overlap at the end of that daytime mission and before the evening mission begins. So be able to get those, those overlapping coverages, and be able to talk to both supervisors and make sure they blend together well. It'll also give me some daylight hours to be able to then look the next 24 hours out, which is, which section are we going to hit next.
These are primarily removal operations?
It's almost all removal. Some of, some of the neighborhoods where the, where there aren't sidewalks, where we can actually get in with the, with the, one of these snow blowers, we could actually go in and do some of the widening during a normal daytime shift without causing, you know, residential impacts.
Yep.
You know, we would still be able to, you know, do those without having to worry about, you know, costly hauling operations. But the vast majority, all but the corners, you've got to dig them out and move them.
Right.
You know, the busier roads where there simply is no other place to put it, and because there's pedestrian sidewalks behind them, you've got to load that stuff away and haul.
Is it not, on the, some of those side streets, is it not possible to plow them at this point anymore?
It wasn't possible to plow them after the first storm.
Right, just because it was no place to plow.
January 26th, 27th.
Plowed the snow too.
The snow was so high and so soft.
But we did get some...
You plow it up, it slide right back down.
But we did get some, well, some meltdown, some pack down, both, on Sunday, but...
Followed by deep penetrating freeze, which turned what was powdered now into, into solid bricks.
Yeah, so it's just not feasible to, to plow it at this point.
That's correct. So we, you know, we, when we had soft powdery snow, it wouldn't staple it, and now that it had some melt-off and glazed over, and then it just solidified.
How many, how many, just, I guess more of the general public than anything else, how many pieces of plow equipment does the town have? I mean, could you just kind of go over with the equipment?
Sure.
And, and then, you know, how many contractors are we, are we using?
If you actually have the paperwork, just let me, let me get it to answer the question for you more precisely, if I can. Because I did, as part of evaluating our assets, it's not how many we have, you know, how many do we have in our functional, and can we have to be put out there?
Right, exactly.
Actually, if either of the chiefs want to pick it up from here, let me answer that question, and come back to it.
On our end, Joe mentioned to it, mentioned it a little while ago, and I think it's fair to say that everything that's been done at this point is still largely safety-oriented. What we're hearing, and I hear far less than any of you, just because of the way our department operates, so I'm dealing with, you know, single digits of complaints rather than hundreds. But the complaints are that we, you know, you can't get a fire truck down my street. I've, over the last three weeks, I've spent many, many hours just driving around, looking, and I have yet to find a street that we cannot get down. You know, they're tight, and, you know, they're inconvenient, but, you know, there's a difference between inconvenient and impassable. And like I say, not that I've been down every street in the town, but I have yet to find a, a street that is impassable to us. You know, we're opening hydrants every day. I had a complaint that I dealt with yesterday, where I took a look and actually rode down each street that was mentioned, and the hydrants down there not only were shoveled out, but the banks were shoveled away, so, you know, they're, they're very easy to pick out. So, you know, again, it's a little bit slower, but we'll get there, and, you know, we'll be able to do our job.
Thank you, Chief.
I do have that answer for you, if you don't mind. So, starting with our bigger pieces, we have a total of 11 snow plowing equipments, pieces of equipment, which, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 of those are equipped with sanders as well as plows. Now, 2 of those that are sanders have what are called combination bodies on them, so when you use the combination bodies, in addition to those trucks that have simply dump bodies, we have a total of 6 trucks that we could use for, you know, as dump trucks for hauling operations on our own. We have 2 front-end loaders, 1 is pretty tight and is the odd loader, the other one we can actually, we do, can and we do send it out, in a real pinch, and on lighter snow, we can send both loaders out. We have 1 backhoe, which we could, we send out on a pretty regular basis, particularly in cleanup operations. We have 1 bobcat, we send it on a regular basis. We have 6 pickup trucks, which are simply, you know, 1-ton, 3/4-ton pickup trucks that we, we send out during the snowstorms themselves, but, and for cleanup operations afterwards. But they are, they're not anywhere near heavy enough or rugged enough for pushback or anything like hauling materials away. And lastly, we have 2 sidewalk plows, set up with a myriad of attachments, V-plows, which at this point in time, actually after the very first storm, they were worthless, because everything caged right back, and so we have them, we've had them set up since, since the, with the snow blowers on them. So that's what we have internally.
And our own AMIBA assets and the National Guard, that's, has ended.
Yeah, the, we, we had a last, a last contingent left on Thursday afternoon, that was Maryland Department of Transportation, we had 1 huge loader from them, that was here for 3 days, and we had the Pennsylvania Turnpike Authority folks with 5 backhoes and 5 trucks, that were, they were here for 2 full days as well, and they left on Thursday midday, and all of those assets left the region on Friday. National Guard shoveling crews who worked on the Fire Department shoveling hydrants for a total of 4 days were redeployed, I think it was effective last Thursday, all of those assets went directly to MBTA. So, at this point in time, there are only National Guard assets in the region, I believe, and even, and at this point, it's prison crews and National Guard exclusively working for the MBTA.
And actually, the reason I stepped out of the room was, that was Senator Joyce. He called to say that DCR will be at the Tucker School tomorrow morning, or tomorrow, to start removing all the snow around the...
The parkway.
Around the parkway that's the issue?
Around the parkway.
Yeah, but in particular around the Tucker School, so that parents can stop and drop their kids off. He also said that it's possible in the next couple of days that the Norfolk County inmates will be back in East Milton again, but he'll confirm that in the morning.
The, any help we can get, it's always, always helpful. The reality is, is, you know, we think of the Blue, the parkway, the Blue Hills Parkway as a DCR property, and it is, but the, the maintenance of snow operations is actually, whether it's going to contractually or by agreement or whatever, MassDOT does that on behalf, you know, handles that on behalf of the, the DCR. As much as the area around the Tucker itself is important, the fact that the Blue Hills Parkway is down to 1 and 1/2 lanes, over most of its entire lane, is, is a bigger need, is what we really need is, is, you know, the DOT folks to come in here and do just like we're doing, spend the night, and widen that back, and honest to God, widen it and put it up in the, in the island. It's not like you have to put it in driveways, it's, the lane that's lost is mostly that inner lane. It, it does vary, but, you know, most of it's the inner lane, so, you know, if Senator Joyce is listening, I implore if he can help, that's another way to help us, is to get that, that parkway open, because by doing that, it's going to make those crossovers wider, it's going to make the visibility of the intersections that we go in and help widen and make more visible, it's going to make them safer.
Mastard was here all night last night, 28, between Chikatowna and Sanzis, they worked all night long, which, as I've said in all the meetings and publicly, has deceived and maximized a lot at night, because there's just, you don't have to deal with the cars and the traffic.
Right.
You can close streets and just go at it and just get it done.
Are we putting details out, Chief, on the park?
I'm not going to lie, I'm not happy, I'm, I'm not used, I, I don't like seeing you getting deluged with the complaints that you're getting, and I don't like not being able to have answers to the people that are coming to us, which is quite often. And we had a gentleman here, Paula, dealt with yesterday, he came to us, he went to the schools, and I, I don't like not having like a right-of-way answer when someone is raising a safety, because unlike with Chief, I agree with, I mean, Jack and I have passed, passed several times in the past few weeks on the same streets, still looking at, you can get a fire truck every street, but for just 2 cars to pass, you know, a school bus, kids walking, you know, we talked today, there was a kid struck in Quincy yesterday, those things, at least from our perspective, weigh on our mind, and I just, I've, I've been very outspoken in the meetings, always like, there isn't a minute to waste, we, we need to be, we don't need our wheels stuck, we need to like move forward, let's, let's get this going. So, I, I do want to thank, yesterday, the Reading Amory called, everybody came, Therese came, if you had a dump truck, Therese came, Dave Perdios came with his parkway, Bill's been, couldn't have a better partner than this guy right here. We've talked about everything from equipment to priorities, and today, Joe Martinelli, who ran snow operations in this town for years, came into today's meeting on his own just to kind of, and he had a whole, it was, it was really pretty amazing, and I've been friends with him a long time, it was amazing, he's been gone 10 years, it was like he, he never left. And so we were able to like compare notes, and so Joe has 2 operational periods to go, like through the next 2 days, with goals and objectives and locations that they, he's identified 2 schools that really need a lot on the, Pierce Middle being one, and Taca being the other, and the sub-conferences, and as you see, you're just going to report back, DCR plays a big role, and Taca, as does Mastard on the 138 side, and that neighborhood, to me, is always very, from many reasons, but usually is always foremost to my mind, and the emails that we get from them and the concerns, I just, if we could do all this yesterday, I, I'd be happy then. So that's, to me, is like, I think that every minute of every day, we just need to, and I'm willing to do whatever I can to try and help make this work.
Yeah, that, that Tucker area and everything radiating out of the Tucker, that's, you know, tomorrow, daytime operation until 7:00 PM, that we're going to move out of there on Wednesday night, because that entire neighborhood happens to be Thursday's trash collection day, and to be out there, you know, on, on Wednesday night, trying to navigate everybody's trash barrels is just going to be, you know, pure chaos, so we'll go back in there after, after trash is collected on Thursday, get back in there Thursday night, and then Friday.
Chief Wells, how is it going with the school arrival and dismissals? I know, for comments on Facebook, we had some inquiries, complaints that it was difficult for parents with some of the drop-off and pickup yesterday, but has that improved today? How is it?
So we have, so let's go through, let me just go through the elementaries, which are the, and then I'll get into Pierce. Cunningham and Collicott got a ton of attention, not just from DPW, but from parents with snow, I mean, they, that, so there's a lot of snow, if you drive by Collicott, it's, yeah, it's noticeable. I saw you yesterday going, but a lot of snow has been moved. Pierce was the intersection of Kerrigan's, and that's the first operational period, that's the priority for tonight.
That's ongoing right now.
That's ongoing right now, that's the priorities to, it's not in the school, it's getting it away from identifying on Central Avenue, Brook, the central down towards Russellwood, Bonad, Fairfax, Clapp, Brack, the streets that contiguous. Tomorrow, it's the Taca, and then the third operational period is the Glover, but the Glover got a lot of attention, and the Glover is where we're spending MPD resources, we're running a one-way in, one-way out, which we had tried for 2 days before the school vacation, and that's, we're going to keep that in place, it's working, you know, the side streets, white one, the things that people are using normally, they're normally, you know, particularly if it's a side street, they can't have that. So we're running a one-way in, one-way out, it takes 3 cars. We did have a car at Pierce, which was the issue that was, that was, came to your attention yesterday. Lieutenant Foley's been on top of that, and Kevin is the day commander, he's very experienced, he, he pays attention to every little bump on the road that takes place, and just, I mean, as I told Amory today, we met today in the middle of it, one of the sergeants who was with us working, who was actually writing this, his mother died, so, over in East Milton, just boom, just like that, this afternoon, and that was like a hiccup for the sergeant. But anybody who thinks that we're not focusing on this and paying attention, they, they don't know how often we talk. But I think by Friday, even, maybe even, sort of today, Tuesday, maybe even Thursday, you're going to see a dramatic improvement in the neighborhoods around those elementary schools. The high schools really, the high schools all, they, they put a lot of effort into the high school, we had a plan in place, ready to go tomorrow for the high school, but we didn't have to do it because they got so much snow out of there, we didn't have to, we didn't have to initiate it. And I got to give same areas of the hills, I, I had it posted on Facebook, I talked to 1 parent today, everyone should go and see what I've, fabulous job that staff does, they are unbelievable, they're one-way in, one-way out, live drive, drop-off, pickup, everyone from the principal to every teacher, from the second you walk in, they got a cone, whether you're 4 years old or even the 8th grade, that's how everybody goes to school. And I know it's not the biggest school, but they take it very seriously, and I've even said to my dear friend Mary, Mary can't watch what they're doing, they're just, they're very good at it, so. I, I do think that that aspect of it will be, I mean, it is, the snow's, it's very high, it's just, and it's not really Joe's fault, it's, it's not, and Joe Martinelli said this today, it's not 1978, we could just go down snow in the Ponce River.
Right.
You know, we, we have, and I think, we said this today, this is going to leave scars. When this is all gone, potholes, streets are a mess, you know, what it does to greenery, we talked about different, Bill's talked all about snow dumps, just listening to it, I think the fewer places you can put snow, the less damage you have when it's all over. Because, I think I wrote this in an email to you today, once the sun comes up, the people in this town are going to want to go, from spring sports, they're going to want everything, you know, there's going to be, Dave Perdios was here to help us now, who can give guys, not a lot, but can give help to the DPW, he's not going to be able to do that in April, maybe because he's going to have to, I mean, cabin fever is alive in Washington, Milton, if anyone hasn't figured that out, it definitely is.
In the more severe the winter, the more it sets out.
Oh, God, yeah.
But I think it's important to note that we have an action plan in place now, that we all worked on for the past 2 days, and that we have to stay focused on that action plan, and we really shouldn't deviate from that.
Yeah, because it's easier to get, in the meetings, it's easy to have side, and for all of you, you'll get, it's easy to get pulled, I hear 1 story, this plan, and to me, Joe Martinelli just reemphasized it to us today, that this, this will work, this is, you know, this will definitely work, and...
Just a couple of questions, things I wondered about. Cunningham, Collicott, during snowbirds, have they ever thought about staggering the arrival times of those schools?
Did you get this call today? Did you get, I got the same call today.
No, no, actually...
I've, I've asked this several times.
Just because it's so big, and there's so many parents coming there all at once, if you stagger them an hour, you know, you...
I kind of agree with that, I had this discussion with a parent today, because they're trying to run out. I'm not as familiar with how they'd pick up drop-off as Kevin, but from what I understand, they empty the school outside, so the school, say whatever, it's 2:20, Bill will know this, but everyone's dismissed, so you can all go outside.
Mm-hmm.
So today, the concern was, because you're right, so many cars came, and you, it's just such a massive pressure.
Right.
On 2 schools that were really built, like, for walking.
Right.
And now it's like, it's something like 70 to 80 percent are parents and driving in the, and so it's not a bad idea, I just, I think...
At least during, you know...
During emergencies, yeah, just, just, it's...
Tom, what are you thinking, your regular school hours as they would normally be, and then in, in a snow emergency, you know, 1 of those 2 schools has a 1-hour delay?
Yeah, exactly.
And then stays, stays late, right?
Well, we, I imagine it would make it...
Some of the buses, though, I think some of it has to do with, the buses have multiple roles.
Yeah, yeah, it's logistics, I'm sure, yeah.
I know that the bus plays into it, but, but so many, I, I'm with you, I'm like, like, I was, I, when Mary wanted to open for those 2 days, I was very, and I don't usually weigh, this is usually between Joe and her, but my feeling was, Mary, take the 2-hour delay, because there was just so much pressure, like you say, on the 8 o'clock, the 7 to 8:30 commute, let's keep the Milton kids, and some parents are going, well, we're thinking their interest of their public safety, you know, let's try to do this without adding to what's already chaotic to begin with.
Right.
Just, I mean, you see the, every street, 1:30 in the morning, because it's 1:38, Brook Road, Adam Street, Grand Avenue, just...
Packed, yeah.
Packed. We just add to it.
For all the years I've been here, you know, Mary Glumley and I have had the conversation about the delay, and, you know, in, without getting into details, you know, that she shared with me, you know, there's a, she's very convinced that the... with me, you know, there's a, she's very convinced that the delay does not work in most of the schools, if not across the entire system. There are some instances where the delay wouldn't have made a difference anyway. We wouldn't have gained anything. But in those areas, when, you know, when safety is very much at issue, she is very, very sincere in understanding, you know, what the, what the impact is. And in those instances, we'll actually, you know, close the school, even when it's borderline.
Literally, at Cunningham Collicott, on bad days, you can have traffic back to East Milton in one direction and back, back up to St. Mary's, St. Elizabeth's in the other direction.
Absolutely. And then they're all trying to go.
And then you get road rage and everything else. I mean.
Definitely, it's, I don't know exactly what the, how they do this. And they have that, the early childhood there, the preschool. And it's, I'm with you, because I don't go near, you don't want to go near. But we can have that discussion with her. I think that in the, in the big picture, that when the winter's over, everyone, as a community, we need to look at everything.
Yeah.
Operationally, strategically, from the schools, you know, if kids are going to be out for six days, what can we do to minimize it? You know, what is, we live in the IT world.
Hopefully this is a hundred year event.
I do too. This one, there's a hundred year flood.
I do think that's something our local emergency planning committee can help.
They're already talking about it.
Start, yeah. Something, something for when all of this dies down. Is there anything else you'd like, any of you would like to add for tonight or any other comments or questions from the board?
I just got one quick, maybe I missed it, but what's happening right now? What's going on right now in the town? Is there plowing going on? Is there sanding?
Snow removal. Snow removal is happening right now and that's happening down in the Pierce area along the busiest intersections, you know, on Central and Brook. And there's one local neighborhood where the way the school is set up and the, where the traffic leaves actually runs up through a residential neighborhood. So we're loading all the snow out of those areas tonight. And then tonight, when the snow starts, we'll be, we'll be plowing and sanding the entire town in anticipation of tomorrow's commute.
You may still be there when that happens.
Well, no, I'm saying, so there's a lot of ice, right? There's a lot of ice on the roads. Are we, are we going to start sanding?
Well, sure, we have been sanding, right.
We have been?
We have been sanding and we, but we will, we absolutely need to do it tonight because once we get a, you know, a spattering of snow over it, you know, what is icy now will become treacherously slippery tomorrow. So we're actually, we've increased, we went from a high concentration salt, that we're actually going to a higher concentration sand salt, one for visibility so people can see it, because they don't see the salt, because it's white. But so they can see it and it provides a little heavier, a little higher level of traction. Sand itself provides zero melting capability whatsoever, but it does give you that traction.
Right. So that's happening as well all night tonight?
That's correct.
Can you talk?
Not all tonight, but once we start snow operations, we'll be out there, we sand as we go.
Understood. Okay. There's a lot of questions about why sidewalks are not plowed. Can you talk about the ordinance, the sidewalk ordinance that's not there?
Simply put, there is no such ordinance, ordinance. You know, we in Milton rely on the, the people who own property, whether it's a courtesy to, you know, shovel their sidewalk or not. You know, I've worked in two other communities besides Milton and each of those communities and not just because it's my idea, it's because it's an industry standard. You know, every community has what is typically called the snow policy. It's a manual. What are the limits of liability on damage? What happens if your mailbox gets broken by the town? How to minimize impacts to your driveway and your sidewalks? If you shovel a different way, you might be able, you know, to protect it a little better. You know, those types of things. But on the same token is what the expectations are and what the bylaws require you to do. And then the impacts of, you know, when people snow blow their driveways to the street, you know, rather than the $25 ticket, which is complete waste of energy for them to write tickets. They could write $1,000 of fines in the first hour of a storm and then spend the next month in court prosecuting them. It's crazy.
So in short.
So, and every, every town has a policy which becomes part of a bylaw. And this town, when I first got here, was not interested. And I've come to find out predecessors before me weren't interested in adopting it. I think it's time to revisit that.
It went to town, do you remember that?
I thought it's, I thought it stopped short of going to town meeting. I remember the selectmen were talking about it, seven or eight or nine years ago.
It was drafted.
Yeah, but I think it was in and out of the Warren. It was one of those things where it was pulled at the last minute. But, but that's probably some things that we can talk about when we get to.
But as part of any.
A review in the spring of what we might want to change.
Long range, we have to revisit a lot of things at this point.
I mean, there's a formality of this incident command system that works nationally under NIMS. And as you do, as you work your way through the process, at the very end, there's an actual after action, you know, plan. You sit down and you know, what worked, what didn't work, what can you do better, what would you change, what types of tools would better equip you to deal with the next emergency like this that comes around. And it's those types of things that I suspect could be going on for months after this, after this winter, where we ought to be looking at it. You know, we'll, we'll be debating snow and ice policies in July, I suspect, maybe August.
Hopefully not shove on snow in July.
Yeah. The good news is though, we talked about this in today's meeting, because it was, you three may, the governor addressed this a little bit yesterday, the reimbursement, that they're working very hard to extend this, because this is one major, I believe the president actually commented that he's following this very closely. And I think that you're going to see that, this is unprecedented. And I think you're going, this is like our tornado, but we didn't have the life threatening life. I think that the reimbursement is going to be bigger and longer than you think it will be.
There's a MEMA FEMA conference call on Thursday that we all hope is going to touch on that in a little more detail.
They're targeting the area of 75 percent, which if that, if you're snow and ice, if that's what it winds up becoming for the entire period from January through this storm, that would definitely, for this community, would definitely help.
Anything else, anyone?
I just think, just to touch on what Anne Marie had said a little earlier, that I think it's absolutely imperative that we stay the course with the plan here. You know, we're certainly going to, and I probably shouldn't be the one that is saying this because I don't field that many calls, but we're certainly going to keep fielding complaints. But we have to let these people know that we're working in targeted areas and branching out from the area. And a simple thing on my end, that, you know, early on, I won't take a call to go shovel your individual hydrant. And as we've been sitting here, I've been thinking about it this way. Say that they're working on Elliot Street and they get a call to go shovel Lyman Road, which is always shoveled because it's all firefighters. So that's why I'm picking on Lyman Road. But, you know, from the time you leave Elliot Street to go shovel that hydrant for that one person that hasn't had theirs done yet, you know, there's four to six hydrants that could have been shoveled. So, and his is even worse to move all his stuff. So understand that it's, you know, what's going on out there and that we are out there. And you know what? A lot of people are inconvenienced by this. But, you know, like you say, safety is still the goal for what's, what's taking place.
Yeah, public safety is number one. And, but I do a couple of things. Joe Martinelli, I think we should thank him. I don't know if he's watching, but thanks to Mr. Martinelli for coming in and helping out and volunteering.
He's going to come back tomorrow too. He's going to come tomorrow's briefing.
We appreciate, as a retiree, his willingness to come back in and help out. And I'm glad you mentioned Senator Joyce Dennis, because a week ago, Senator Joyce was helpful in getting us some additional assets. So thank you to Senator Joyce as well. But also to the town administrator and to all of you and the cemetery superintendent, the parks director, the department heads who are not directly reporting to the board of selectmen. You know, we're trying to follow this new model. We'll see where town meeting goes with the Warren article, but we're trying to move the board of selected more towards the policy board, the board of directors, and put more of the day to day on management, not on the board. So I think, you know, showed a lot of leadership yesterday for the town administrator to organize this meeting and for all of you to come together, work cooperatively. You know, we're, we're all in it together and I think you all reflect that attitude. So I think for the board, I think we should thank you and all of your employees. And we're recognizing, there are people who are calling. And the selectmen arguably be part of the problem because we're getting complaints from people and we're sending them all to Joe or to Anne Marie or to Richard or Jack. So we really want to focus on what you're doing. You have a new plan in place. It sounds like it's working. It'll continue to work. We know that there are some problems out there. We're doing our best to address them. And it's an unprecedented, a unprecedented storm. The problems that we're facing, a lot of communities are facing. And we should just keep that in mind, I think. Thank you everyone for coming in tonight. I'm sure we'll.
Thank you.
Probably see you at a future meeting. We appreciate all you do.
See you tomorrow night.
Continue the good work.
First off, question. Thanks for second.
And thank you to the town administrator.
Yep.
We're on to some budget articles, items next. And Amy Dexter is our town accountant. She's going to come up and join us at the table.
Hi.
Good night, everyone. Good evening, Amy.
Hi, how are you?
Hey, Amy.
Okay. The next two items on our agenda are a discussion of the FY16 capital committee's recommendation and the budget discussion. So why don't we start with the capital recommendation? Amy and Tom are the co-chairs of the capital committee and they're going to present to us where their committee is at.
Okay. Well, the committee has met numerous times since last July, August, focusing on the fiscal '16 capital requests from department heads and boards and committees. We received a total of $5.4 million in requests for fiscal year '16 alone, of which.
How much did it, am I forgetting?
Five point four.
About five point four. That's just fiscal '16. The committee had a lot of discussions on how, how to narrow down or how to prioritize the requests. And we're still continuing to work on that. But we did go through a series of steps in trying to rate the requests based upon what type of capital need it was and the life of the project, if it was safety related, those kinds of things. That's still a work in process, but we did consider a lot of those things in making our recommendations.
To what number?
To get to the recommendation of 1.659, $780.
So you had to bring 5.4 million down to 1 point?
Yes. So.
Where did this number come from, the 1 point?
Okay, so that was through a series of meetings, discussions with department heads, discussions amongst the committee members evaluating the different requests, as well as this informal, at this point, rating system that we're still trying to fine tune and tweak to, to help us determine what the committee's priorities are. So the committee has put forward to the board of selectmen for recommendation, a total of $1,659,780 in capital needs for FY16.
Just from my knowledge and maybe the public's knowledge, Amy, because I don't know the answer. Is there a set number you look for every year?
There's, well, a couple of, well, the only one set number is, is we try and keep the debt service level at 1.9 percent of the total tax levy for the year. So in other words, the principal and interest we're going to pay on our bonds for that fiscal year, we want to try and keep as close as we can to 1.9 percent of the tax levy.
And that, that's an unwritten financial policy at that point. So we try to stay within that, but it's not always, we're a little above that.
So this, this number is 1.9 percent of the tax levy?
No, we, we take all the needs for five, five years and we forecast that forward. And we forecast what the related principal and interest payments on those capital requests would be if they were approved and if we borrowed the money for those. And that results in an, an amount of debt service each fiscal year, that that number is what we want to keep within the 1.9 percent.
There's two things you don't want, and either one is bad. You don't want, you don't want your debt service to increase thereby taking money away from your departmental budgets, nor do you want it to decrease, which would wind up happening then, is that money gets added to the departmental budgets and then, you know, you have no capacity to bond anymore because it just keeps shrinking. So you want to keep some kind of a constant level of debt service that, that is neither going to hurt the departmental budgets nor hurt the ability to, you know, to bond going forward or the capacity to borrow going forward. So that's the idea.
So do we always bond capital projects?
No, some of these are non bonded. But can we, can we let Amy, I think Amy has a presentation she wants to go through before we keep interrupting.
If I can get that question answered. Do we always bond capital projects?
No. So in, in this analysis that the committee does, if there's things that the committee finds are important enough that they feel that they want to recommend that for funding, we may recommend some be bonded and some not. And generally, how that determination in general is made is if it's something like technology related, computer equipment, you can't bond it for more than five years or seven years. There's, Mass General laws has certain limitations on how long you can borrow for certain types of projects. So the things we tend to look to bond are those with a longer useful life. Those with a shorter useful life don't always make sense.
I got it.
Or are more difficult to fit into the 1.9 percent because they, if it's $100,000 over five years or $500,000 over five years, it's going to be $100,000 in principal alone plus interest, as opposed to $500,000 over 30 years is much easier to fit. So that's kind of the general guidelines.
I knew the answer. I just wanted the public to hear it.
Okay.
So Amy, did you want to continue running through these? I understand from Ted Hayes, our Warren committee chairman, that the capital committee is going to be taking this up again next week and that this is not a final list here. I probably better say it's subject to some changes. Do you want to run through what some of these are and go through a little bit of the breakdown?
Sure. So of the $1,659, we're recommending a million, 200,000, $1,200,300 that the committee has recommended for bonding. Those, again, are things that tend to have a longer useful life, a longer borrowing, allowable borrowing term. The first item on the list is building improvements and repairs to the fire stations totaling $145,000. There's a prisoner transport van for the police department of $51,000. Security camera upgrades at the schools for $68,000. And then there's some server upgrades at both the schools and the towns. The schools portion being $32,500, the town $13,800. There's a bucket truck for the DPW, which is, I think he also calls that like a cherry picker truck where they can go up and that's mainly used to do like changing streetlights, things like that.
And we don't have one right now.
And, well, we have one, but it's very deteriorated.
We may as well not have one, yeah.
Yeah. So that was one of his high priority needs. There's $400,000 for road work in excess of the chapter 90 that the state funds. Surface drains for $200,000, a catch basin cleaner for the DPW for $80,000, and a utility tractor for the parks department for $30,000. So those are the items recommended for bonding. Those in general, I think all pretty much have a use, allowable borrowing term of more than seven or 10 years. Then the committee is putting forth a recommendation of $459,480 of capital that they would recommend not be bonded. The first item on that list is financial software, which we, the town school consolidation committee has presented to the board as well as the school committee. The current software that the town and schools use will be no longer a viable option in the next three to five years. So something needs to be done soon on that. There's several iPads and iPod carts for the schools totaling $186,780. There's HVAC control upgrades at Pierce Middle School totaling $38,000. That system is pretty much on the brink of dying. So that's a top priority of consolidated facilities. There's computer hardware for both the town and schools, 27, I'm sorry, the town and the library, $27,200 for the town and $25,000 for the library. And then there's a vehicle for inspectional services of $22,500. One of the vehicles that they've been using that is an old DPW car, I believe, which was probably a cruiser before that, is some safety concerns with it. And they are on the road quite a bit during the day, so they need a reliable vehicle.
I should say struggling with it, but trying to get through. I should say struggling with, but trying to get through is, you know, we've got our informal, and we want to formalize, I think, as a committee, much, many of these policies. This is the first year, we've had the 1.9% policy in place for a while. This is the first year we've really put into place a kind of a ranking system for the various capital projects. And it is a very formal system, but it's, I mean, it's had a few bumps and heaps along the way this year because of the, you know, first year of implementation. But it not only looks at, it looks at about six different items in terms of capital projects. One of them is the prior, you know, the priority is it a public safety, you know, a health and public safety need would give it a first priority. That's only one of the categories. We look at like five other categories, including useful life and, you know, would save, would be a cost-saving, you know, for the department. There's a bunch of things you look at and kind of give it a numeric score based upon those things.
So I have a question here on the, so who put all these prices together? Who put all these numbers together?
The individual department heads.
So for example, with the very first one on fire, building improvements and repairs, I hope the fire chief didn't put that together?
He, no, it was much, there was a memo from the Consolidated Facilities Director along with the fire chief that worked collectively. This was, there were, I forget how they termed it, kind of mandatory and then not as...
And these were what they felt were the mandatory ones.
Right.
There was still a lot of reluctance, so obviously we know we're talking about new fire stations and...
But this is a lot of money for...
It is a lot, but if you, if you read through what some of those things are, they, you know, some of them are relatively important.
I think these, the Firespace Needs Study Committee generated the...
To a large degree, yes.
The list of items, maybe not the prices, but...
Right. To a large degree.
No. The question I have on that is, I thought that was going to be in the non-bonded section.
Originally, it was, yeah.
It was, but...
Because the life of it is uncertain.
Right. Yeah. If we wind up, and I don't think it will happen, but if we wind up in three years tearing the fire stations down, then, you know, you spent that money and you only got three years out of it, but...
And, you know, for the DPW, a bucket truck, $180,000, that's a lot of money. Is that what a bucket truck costs?
Yes. The, just the bucket equipment that's inside it, reconditioned is $35,000 to put it on a chassis. It's about a $150,000 chassis.
Like when you can get a prisoner transport van for $51,000, a bucket truck for $180, I'm not doubting your numbers, but I'm just saying, I think it's a lot of money.
Actually, those are bits. Those, that's not a made-up number. Those are bit numbers. So that's a real number.
And those, the DPW historically has used their equipment long past the useful life they last, yeah.
Understood, yeah.
Can someone speak to the iPads?
So that was three different, I condensed them on my spreadsheets, but the way that the school committee submitted them was, there's two iPad carts with 30 iPads for the sped department totaling $30,570. There's iPad carts with 30 iPads totaling $91,710. And then there's 150 iPads for staff members totaling $64,500.
So some are for staff and some will be used in the classroom?
Mm-hmm.
Right. And even the staff will be used in the classroom, I understand.
Yeah, I meant students.
But yeah, some of them are students, some of them are teachers, yeah.
And this is being proactive anyway. I think this is the, this is the future.
Mm-hmm.
You know, school books are going to be gone and everybody will have an iPad.
And that type of technology is really, I believe Mass General laws, you could, and I think you may have the option to bond it longer than five years, but the likelihood that you're going to have them after five years, so...
Unless you can have them after three years, it's pretty...
Right.
Correct.
So we would, that's why those are on the non-bonded list.
Can you just talk about the virtualized service? What is that in the bonded?
That, can you help me out with that one, Tom?
You really need an IT person, but it's...
It's a techy thing.
Actually, you don't even have to explain. My question is, how come it's not in the non-bonded?
Because you could have a longer useful life on that than like the computers or the iPads.
Okay.
So I believe in our projections for those. We're estimating that we would probably borrow for 10 years on those. So Katie had mentioned earlier, we do have another capital committee scheduled for next Monday. There are a few items on the table that we're going to consider, which could potentially change this list a bit.
Up or down?
Well, I think if we add something, we might have to take something else off.
So the memo says the capital committee voted to approve the recommendations of the following. So should we vote this? Should we defer this? What is...
I think we should defer it till Monday because this could, I don't think the list will change, but perhaps what we might want to bond and we might revisit that a little bit, I think.
Right.
Our next meeting...
Is that till March 10th?
Although we are post, I should have mentioned that earlier, we are posted for meeting, notice has been posted for tomorrow night at the Warren Committee meeting, which is their budget discussion. I guess the question for Amy and Tom is, is there anything we need to vote for purposes of tomorrow night's meeting, given that you're considering revising, potentially revising this, or at least revisiting this Monday?
I guess that would depend when the Warren Committee wants to take up the, or how soon they need, they need to take it up. I mean, you certainly use a placeholder.
And this has already been submitted to Ted Hayes?
It has with, you know, I did tell him that it was, we had another meeting and that more than likely there could be some additional items added or some things changed.
Right.
But he was eager to at least get something.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, which I fully understand.
And I think really his, the area he's probably most interested in is the non-bonded, just for tomorrow night's meeting.
Right. And I think if that does change, I don't think it's going to be substantial, but...
No. My guess is it would be probably more the bonded items.
So should we, should we vote on the non-bonded, non-bonded capital recommendation, which is 459,480?
I would rather not. I mean, only, I mean, if you do and we change it, then I think we're going to just have to come back and vote it again.
Right. And I think...
All right. Do we have a...
More than likely that the total number there is probably not going to have a lot of, you know, I think that's...
Right.
I think you're okay if you wait.
Can we at least report to the Warren Committee that we have a consensus that this represents the capital committee's current thinking?
Yes.
Ted Hayes knows the committee is going to be looking at this again. We don't necessarily have to vote it tonight, but this is probably what they should use for purposes of their meeting tomorrow night.
Right. I would say yes, yeah. So I think philosophically, too, we're kind of, as a committee, struggling a little bit. I think we're all in agreement that in addition to bonding, there should be two things, a certain portion of one-time money should always be set aside for capital needs, be it a, and probably a ratio, you know, a percentage of available one-time money, be that 25%, be that 50%. I don't, we don't know the right number, but some portion, we should say, as a town, the purpose for that money should be capital needs. In addition to that, most towns just set aside a piece of their operating budget, and I guess we do in the sense that we set up, we set aside a piece of our operating budget for debt service, but we don't set aside a piece of our operating budget each and every year for capital needs. And, and most towns do. They say, we don't care what, you know, that, that we're going to take the operating budget and we're going to take a percentage of that operating budget, and it's going to be funded for capital needs, regardless of whether we have free cash or not.
I'm not sure that's a policy the capital committee should be deciding. I think it might be...
Well, no, no, it would have to be a selectman, but it would be, it would be coming through as a recommendation to the board from capital committee.
Okay. Or we're going to be reviewing the financial policies in the spring anyway, so we may want to bring it up on our own. But, I mean, my expectation was that we were going to vote the total bottom line here, which is 1.6, which includes both bonded and non-bonded.
I think if you want to vote the bottom line, I don't think that's going to change substantially if you want to vote.
No. And if it did, could you just, at the next meeting, vote the changes?
I think we could.
Sure.
We can have a motion to reconsider and vote the amended recommendation of the capital committee.
And I know in the past, I've come back with a second recommendation, because normally we also have to consider some additional sewer equipment that the committee hasn't yet. So...
Okay. So since the capital committee's already voted to submit this in the Warren Committee's meeting tomorrow night, do we want to take a vote on this bottom line here? And I know the town administrator's planning to go to the Warren Committee meeting tonight if it's, if it's still going on by the time we break. And we can let the Warren Committee know that, which they already know, the capital committee is revisiting this Monday. We may be voting a new total to submit to them, or a revised list, if not a revised total. All right. Then do we have a motion to, to recommend $1,659,780 in support of the recommendation of the capital committee?
Some will.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Amy's going to stay for the next item, which is the FY16 budget. Again, the Warren Committee's going to be having their budget meeting tomorrow night, which replaces what they used to have on a Saturday, all-day budget meeting, but their, last couple of years, they've gone to an evening meeting. A month or so ago, we voted to support, the Warren Committee had prepared six scenarios, and they had a consensus on their committee that they were recommending, whether they're calling Scenario E, which, which we voted to support. The school committee had, before us, had taken it up and voted to support it. We did vote to support Scenario E, which is not premised on an operating override for this year and is premised on using some free cash for, some of our $3 million in free cash for operating expenses. So we asked the town administrator to take a first pass through the cuts that would be required to some of our departments, and I think the Warren Committee asked that you also look at some of the other non-selectmen's departments. And the town administrator's going to give us some recommendations tonight on, on that item.
That's correct, Madam Chair. As a result of the directive from the Board of Selectmen, you had charged me with looking at the level service numbers for the fiscal 16 budget, and you asked me to make some recommendations to you on budget cuts for the departments under your board, under the Board of Selectmen's jurisdiction. And the Warren Committee had asked me to take a look at the departments not under the Board of Selectmen's jurisdiction and to speak with those department heads who then also spoke with their boards. So if you want to go through the list, I know you, I sent the list out to you yesterday. Do you have the list?
Let me see if I can find it.
If I can go through each of them.
I don't have to find it. It wasn't my email someplace, though.
Do you want me to coffee? Please.
You know, this took a considerable amount of time, the last several days, of the town administrator and the town accountant, on top of all the public safety issues. So getting this put together was quite a bit of work.
It's been a busy week. So what we did was, we took the level service budgets, we reviewed them, we really drilled them down, and the following cuts are my recommendations. For the central business office, I recommend that we cut $500 from that department, and that would eliminate a conference, one conference for the town accountant. But in speaking with the town accountant, she attends the seminar every other year, the Mass Seminar every other year, so she could, she's going to be going this year for fiscal 16, she could, would stand that $500 cut. Consolidated Facilities Department is a cut of $10,000. And what I did was, I brought the seasonal and the overtime numbers back down to the fiscal 15 level service appropriation. Conservation Commission, they had requested $3,000. I brought, reduced them by 500, which brought them to their level service number for fiscal year 15. The Council on Aging, I reduced them by $500, which would be a reduction to their building maintenance department, but I spoke with Marion Sullivan, and she's able to absorb that. I am, in my recommendation, funding the van driver position for the Council on Aging because it was one of your top priorities. So that will be funded under this scenario.
Is that included in the level service number?
Yes. It's included in the level service number. DPW, I'm cutting $100,000 from the DPW budget, and that will reduce Joe's beginning stages in addressing stormwater management. And I spoke with Joe, and he's comfortable with that. He wanted to start in fiscal year 16, but he recognizes, as all departments recognize that cuts have to be made. They support the potential cuts, and so he's, he will live with that $100,000 cut.
Does that mean, then, that he would start the stormwater in '17, which is the year that the unfunded mandate really hits?
Yes. He'll be able to start some of the stormwater management in fiscal year 16, but not all that he was hoping to address. The fire department, I'm cutting them by $209,814. And what I did there was, I reduced the amount that they had asked for overtime. They'd asked an increase in overtime. I eliminated their request for a new lieutenant's position, and I level funded to the fiscal year 15 appropriation their personal day buyback.
And let's just speak to overtime for a minute, because we do have a request that we took up from the chief at this last meeting we had a week ago, where he was asking for $100,000, and we approved a reserve fund transfer request of 50 and asked the Warren Committee to set aside 50, which they may or may not do. But I believe the chief said when he was here last, that in the, last year, because he didn't have the illnesses in his department, he didn't...